Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number three swearing in of new planning zoning commission members Ryan Kuski and Dan Levitz.
Repeat after me. I, Ryan Kuski, do solemnly swear.
I, Ryan Kuski, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the Commissioner for the Planning Commission of the City of Mayor.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the Commissioner for the Planning Commission of the City of Mayor.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God. Thank you.
Dan?
Yes?
I, Daniel Levitz, do solemnly swear.
I, Daniel Levitz, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the Commissioner for the Planning Commission of the City of Mayor.
And to discharge faithfully the duties of the Commissioner for the Planning Commission of the City of Mayor.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Welcome to the planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Approval of the minutes from September third, planning commission meeting. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes of September third, twenty-four, planning commission. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Um, should we switch five and six by chance or not?
Nope, we'll go in order.
Okay. Discussion on text amendment to amend title XV land usage, chapter one fifty-two zoning, section one fifty-two point zero zero three, definitions, section one fifty-two point zero nine zero, outside storage, and section one fifty-two zero nine one, screening of the multiple municipal code of city of mayor.
Yeah, I'll just kind of run through this quick. So if you remember a couple months back, you guys had a public hearing to amend the text in regards to storage containers within the city of mayor. There was some discussion. We had previously discussed it at a meeting before that as well. And we had some draft text there that you guys went through. Uh, there was a recommendation for approval to amend the text. That motion then went to the city council who discussed it at a previous city council meeting. And they had some questions and have sent this back for further discussion on the draft text that we have here. Uh, a couple of the items that the city council's looking for clarification on is what to do about enforcement of existing properties using utilizing, excuse me, utilizing storage containers. Um, and what, you know, that would be out of compliance. There are a few properties in town. We discussed them at our meeting that do have these. Um, I don't even know if they were all known before this kind of discussion came up. But some of those may be in non-compliance based on the new code. So the question is, uh, what do we need to do to, would these be grandfathered in? Would they have to be um, updated? And, you know, in some cases, I think they'd have more than, I think, the three that was being proposed. You know, would they have to remove some? So that's one of the things that the council talked about. Uh, second item was discussed was a temporary use of storage containers for construction or moving. Uh, one of the questions was, um, what's the time period for this temporary use? You know, if it's for construction purposes of six months, is that sufficient? Um, a lot of times you might see when a building's being constructed or a house, they'll throw something on site. They can store, you know, equipment and tools and things like that in there. Um, or whatever. And then when they're done with construction, it gets moved to a different site or whatever. So, um, basically, that's kind of some of the things that were being looked at. Um, I guess in, if there's anything else that you feel that needs to be discussed or re-brought up or talked about, we can do that as well. But we're here for some additional discussion tonight and basically, uh, second, uh, new recommendation back to the council uh, with this text amendment. Um, another, and maybe you know, but I think another comment what had to do with, you know, why is this even needed if it hasn't been an issue in the past? Why are we changing this? But I don't know if you have any more details on that standpoint or?
And, uh, it was reflected in that. The, uh, council asked the question, why is this even coming up? Of course, there hadn't been any complaints about storage containers. Uh, to them, it just kind of came up out of the blue. Uh, something to be fixed that didn't have any complaints coming forth in the first place. Um, getting back to the, uh, to the temporary side of things, they're looking for the construction end of things. How long do you want them to be allowed to be there? And then on the residential end of things for moving pods, things like that. Two different, I think there's two different definitions of temporary to fill in there. And then, yeah, they came back and talked about, uh, how do we want, what, how is the city going to enforce non-conformities once these new rules go into place? They said, it's nice that they're recommending up language, but they haven't offered any resolution to, how is the city going to take enforcement action if they have six containers? Or if they have a container that's rusted out or not the proper color or in the wrong spot? What are they recommending the city do about it? Rather than say, here's a text amendment, adopt them and leave the enforcement mayhem. Up to whatever may be. So looking for guidance on that with these, with this being proposed. So that, those were the ones that, uh, council wanted to have covered. My own personal thoughts as we were looking at this again. Do we want to ask, so, do we want to see about having some of the, reaching out to the business owners who have containers and specifically inviting them in for a conversation with us on this topic? Those being the ones that would be affected by it. Uh, I know we published for the public hearing, but we didn't specifically go out and say, this is something that's about to affect you. You have storage containers right now. We invite you in. Let's have a discussion about it.
I think the first thing to probably bring up would be not answering the questions in order, but the, how did this come about? And I believe it was council member Han brought up, not so much, I think he just wanted some kind of defined language or where do we stand on containers because he was seeing them throughout the city and wondered if they were, if we could get language defining what the containers were and, and their use because he didn't want it to get out of hand, the number or how they look in, in the community, where they can be. And I think the general tenor of the commission was to not so much create a new enforcement mechanism, but rather set defined parameters that would accommodate what we're already seeing. Because the current state was that if interpreted the way we were reading ordinance as it stood, they were already out of compliance. So we're more so trying to define what they, what, how containers fit into storage and, uh, not really tailor the ordinance to what already exists, but to try to minimize exactly what you're asking, which is how much enforcement would need to incur. I don't think anyone's looking for additional enforcement or starting to make an issue on something that isn't. It was more so, let's try to wrap the ordinance around what we're already seeing so that it isn't the current code violation that it is. To, to that point, it probably would be nice to get input from them, but, um, ultimately, I mean, that input would be in the context of currently, these are in violation. We're looking at redefining or, you know, expanding, defining and, and expanding what's allowed and then seeking input from that point of view, I suppose.
Thoughts on the temporary, on the definitions for temporary? Construction versus residential?
Construction, I would say, a project can go on for a year. So I would say, as long as you have the permit and you haven't finalized the permit, you get to have a container. And if you need a, say, more time, you need to, if usually on a permit, if you need more time with the permit, you have to then write a letter to the city saying, I need more time extension. So that should be able to extend your container at the same time.
Do a lot of people use that in construction residentially?
Um, they use pods a lot of times. It's for, you know, move the furniture out type of thing and put it in the third, you know, pod. And then sometimes the pods, if you don't have enough space, they'll take it to a different location. But if you have enough space, they'll just leave it there.
Never thought of that. Construction and personal.
Yep. So, I think, when you say having the construct, the storage container temporarily used on the construction end of things, whether it's commercial or residential building, it's construction in general. Having it run with an active building permit makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Just because some projects are three months, some are six, some are a year, depends on along the.
Right, as, as long as the permit isn't expired.
Yep.
And once it's final, then the storage container's got to be out of there.
Within a reasonable time.
What about moving? Like if you used a pod because you're moving?
Thirty days? If you can't get your stuff out of a pod in thirty days, what are you doing?
Right.
Yep.
I, I've moved a number of times and it takes more than thirty days. You're dragging your feet.
It's procrastination, yes.
So would people have to like apply for a permit to have it in there? Or is it just, if it becomes an issue, there's documentation that like, oh yeah, I have seen it there longer than thirty days?
I, I wouldn't want to issue temporary permits for construction. I think is, it becomes a reactionary base. If somebody says, hey, this pod's been here for this long, we go, okay. We'll send them a letter, say thirty, thirty days from now, you gotta have it moved.
Right, okay.
Start the clock.
Okay. I'm a little new to the planning commission and some of the verbiage, so just ask my questions. So we would add verbiage in there for temporary or is there something already in there for that? Cause I think this was just talking about.
It just references temporary, but it doesn't give definition to it. So in this, it sounds like for construction purposes, it temporary is allowed as long as the building permit is active. As soon as it's finalized out, it's got to be out of there.
And relocating thirty days? Or if you have a better word for relocating?
Yeah, for personal moving purposes or whatever.
Thirty days.
Okay.
What does that sound for the planning commission?
That's reasonable.
Reasonable.
And did that kind of cover enforcement?
No, uh, enforcement that was discussed at council was you have a property with six of them on site. The max we're proposing is three. Or they have two that are stacked or not saying you can't stack them. Or they have one that the color is bright pink and it doesn't match the principal structure. What is planning commission proposing the city do for enforcement action? Are we going out and we're sending letters and we're going to force them? Or are they grandfathered in until it switches and then they have to know at that point it's got to come into conformity? Or what does that mean?
So we get to decide if it's grandfathered in or not?
Uh, you, you make the recommendation up to council.
Well, right, but like, our recommend, so it's not just a new ordinance, everything is always grandfathered in. There's instances where, again, and.
Yeah, there's instances on a new ordinance where you could enforce it, give everyone a, you know, a period of time to come into compliance and then you enforce it. Or there's situations where if you amend the ordinance, you can say, well, that was existing prior to it. They'd be grandfathered in. You know, for instance, if, uh, you change your front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-five feet, well, there might be houses that are, or twenty-five feet to thirty feet, I should say, it might be house at twenty-five, they're going to be grandfathered in. You know, so same kind of principle here, so.
Well, something with this, so where it's mobile, I mean, not, would be, if we're going to say grandfathered in, then how do we take inventory or stock of right now in this instance where things are or aren't? I mean.
I mean, it's, it's. The city could try to go out and look at every property and see who has them and who doesn't and what they have and, and document it. Or just, cause we probably know what, four or five properties at the most in towns that have them. Um, and then we know what they have. So if all of a sudden they end up with, instead of having three, they have eight all of a sudden a year down the road. We know that, hey, they're over the limit and that wasn't like there. You know, pictures are a good way to do that.
Yeah, you were showing satellite pictures. That should help.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Uh, that, that's the front that got me thinking about when we invite these businesses in that we're talking about, because we're talking enforcement.
Yep.
Bring them in, let's have a discussion. This is where we're going and this is what we want to see as a city. Do they have some clever ideas or how would enforcement look to them or what are they thinking about?
I think it's a good idea.
I, I like that idea because, you know, as I said before, our business uses, uh, containers for storage uh, behind our building. And I would like to hear like, what are they using? You know, like, why, we say three, but maybe the, maybe that number actually is four because of whatever reasons. It's, I think it's important to understand what, why they're using it and maybe some things that we didn't really think about. Cause we don't actually, you know, I don't physically use them.
As if they have a bigger lot, they can afford to have four or five containers versus a person that has a smaller lot can only have one or two. So, I mean.
On the other hand.
Okay.
Containers on a lot, they're not going to pay no tax.
Okay.
If you want to pay an extra tax for them having them, you can do that.
Okay.
I don't.
I, I struggle with taxing these at this, if we're only going to allow three, I just say because I want businesses to be here, I feel like they're a bad, a bonus that I'm not interested in overtaxing. I think we pay taxes on a lot of things in this environment. And so for me as a, as a small business owner, I think it's, yes, it's a revenue source, but I, I agree, like if there's a hundred containers, that's why we have a limit. So that they're not taking up the entire lot usage.
I think it's like you said, I think the idea of bringing them in and just understanding what they use is, what, what they're even using. Maybe they're just sitting empty. Maybe they're like, yeah, okay, I'll get rid of that. I mean.
Yeah, I thought I was going to use it. I'm not, so.
Right, right.
I only actually, I only need three here, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I think we've got the text amendments there for the definitions. I'll reach out. I'll reach out to the businesses with containers, invite them to our next meeting on December third, as long as they can all make it. If not, we could push it to the January meeting, whenever they can all make it, get their schedules in line and then get together and have a good conversation.
I really like that.
Anything else on number five?
I think that's it, John.
That's all I got at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Number six, discussion with Preston Fox of Four Square Builders on proposed old creamery property use. That's you.
Good evening. So I'm Preston Fox. I'm actually here, I guess I work with Four Square Builders, but I'm here as Fox Properties. Um, something I've done in the past for Garage Condo. So the conversation came up with, um, just the old creamery of, you know, what to do with that piece of property. As somebody brought to my attention, it was for sale. Uh, the last gentleman that had his ideas just couldn't quite pencil it out and, and, um, we have a little piece of property that has some challenges and, and, um, I have some ideas. So, uh, when Mr. Johnson gave me the, the invite to come on in, he said, let's have a quick conversation and see what, what the city mayor's appetite is on my idea. I'm not sure where you'd like to start. I, I brought a few little small sketches and, um, some small ideas. Um, I think we have right now property that is zoned a certain way that doesn't quite meet what I'm looking for. It's still commercial, but a different classification. Um, do you have anything that you want to start with?
Yep, so I'll fill in a little bit of that, that background. Uh, the old creamery property is currently zoned commercial, uh, two. So in that, we have our code here. So commercial two permitted uses, commercial establishments, including but not limited to retail, grocery store, hardware, drug, clothing, eating, drinking places, personal services, professional services, finance, insurance, real estate. These are the listing of what's in the C two district. For what Mr. Fox is proposing, uh, John and I discussing it, that would be a commercial industrial type of use. Uh, in our conversations about, uh, the creamery property, C two is what it is. If there was a C one type of use that had a downtown look and feel, we were more comfortable with entertaining that. But when it goes full commercial industrial, that's when I told Mr. Fox, at this point, it's outside of my realm of interpretation of things. And if you want to pursue that, we would need to do a, an amendment to the comp plan on that and then do a rezone. And then I said, at this point, if you want to make your case to the planning commission, I'll certainly put you in front of them to make your case on that. So that's the background of it. So yeah, you certainly want to hand out anything you've got for the planning commission to take a peek at.
Well, like you said, so first and foremost with the property being, um, it need to be rezoned. If I may. So existing property, uh, with the old creamery. What is there and what is surrounding it? Uh, my, my appetite is Garage Condo, and I've done a few, um, complexes, whether it's sitting around in Hutch, one in Glencoe, one in town. Um, here would be my next idea. Correct me if I'm wrong. So for what I do need or what I would try to build would be more along the, like I said, the industrial side and we're not quite there. With reading through the codes, with reading through the ordinances, um, to try to, try to find a balance between what is there to the north with the storage sheds, to try to still, um, make it look more, you know, I don't want to have my buildings look like a storage shed. Um, we try to do something a little nicer, just a bit rough lines, pick some stones, some, some different options. But at the end of the day, it still is, um, individual personalized storage. Um, they are, they've always been individual garages that are one big building, but sold and counted up as a normal, um, smaller individual garage. Every garage has its own PID. Um, we try to do and try to work with what is there. We have that stormwater pond. Um, there is, there's some options there for how to, how to build around it. Um, we talked about the existing.
The old wellhouse.
Well, that's there. Um, and again, the existing creamery, which, you know, walking through, it's a nice old building, but it's, it's old and it's well past its prime. So, well past its prime. So, uh, so yeah, so my questions are, um, for you guys, the, the conversation is, 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 uh, is a building like this something that the city would entertain? Um, it would be a request for rezoning and also then probably a request for variance just for, um, and some of the property lines, just some boundaries, the initial where I'm at tonight.
So just to clarify, this is for specific to storage or are these like, like businesses can come in and do auto repair or auto body, things like that?
Well, there's some discussion on that. Um, again, in the past, what I've done, if they've been individual, um, more of a, um, personal storage kind of units, right? Um, if, if you're to look, or if you're to look in some of them that we've built out, it's, it's guys that have some cars, maybe some boats. Um, some of them use them as their own personal like workstation space. Um, but none of them have been open for a business that we can run a nine to five business out of. Um, I have guys that have like a, hmm, I don't want to say motorcycle shop in, but you know, they'll fix and work on their bikes and they'll work on other clients' bikes, stuff like that, but they're not a, uh, an open nine to five business. And again, that's just what I have done in the past, not to say it couldn't be different here, but I guess it just, it's still, so default, um, depends on, on zoning and probably, um, just some of the, the documentation of the building. How we do our.
So what you're saying is that it could be used either way and there would be an option for business to run it, so.
I think that's a little bit also for the city to decide on.
Well, I just mean that.
But, but yes, correct.
Business growth.
Yes.
No different than the fire station building is right now.
Yep.
I don't know how that's going.
C two.
So anyway, uh, that's what I'm looking at, yeah. It could be storage or it could be a business going in there. It looks to me, or it could be water panel, there's, there's a, different option of sizes for that possibility to happen. That a business could start in some of the larger ones. What are they, thirty feet wide?
So the majority of them are thirty feet wide, forty-five foot deep. And there's a few in the corner just because of the layout there a little bigger.
How would this sit on that property?
This is, this is Blue Jay.
That's Blue Jay.
This is the storage shed side.
Okay, I'm only asking because we would lose all.
Here's the stop sign.
Off street parking. Um, for Fifth Street. Uh, currently the, the building that was, uh, is agave, uh, we, they utilize, they don't have a lot of parking and that street is utilized. So we would lose, if, if any restaurant moved into that other location, where would people park?
Well, if that's his yellow line, would you lose it?
I just didn't upgrade it.
I didn't follow. Where would they lose the parking?
So when, what?
If that was the yellow line of his property.
This would be all cement, like people, you wouldn't want people parking. So when people park here, we gave them a variance. So they have parking here and everybody parks right here alongside this road. So if the building is like this, this is all going to be driveway.
Not necessarily.
So how would people that own these enter in?
So right here is your holding pond, right?
Okay, so we can park, so we can still have those parked.
So, so yeah, so this, what I have kind of dialed in is that there's a small entrance here. And then we would, this all stays intact to come around here. The garage is would be here.
That was my.
Coming around with it.
Okay.
So there would be an entrance into the, the property just like it is now, kind of right in front of that wellhouse, so to speak. Um, but yes, nothing on the street in front of that, that holding pond would change from, from our side.
Would come off of Ash Avenue and off of Fifth Street.
What's that?
Ash Avenue is the street.
That's the east side.
Straight north.
Okay.
On the east side of your lot, there would be an entrance there.
Um, not necessarily. Um, again, that's probably one thing that have to get dialed in the rest of the way. But normally, because it is, as is storage garages, like personal, the, the use is pretty low. So to have more than a couple cars there is.
So you're just talking about one entrance on the, on the stop set?
Yep.
Yeah, you won't be losing any parking.
Yeah, I just, I didn't think about that storage.
Just so everyone knows, right now, the property is currently guided for commercial and zoned for the, um, uh, C two central business district. The, um, property to the north, the storage sheds or whatever, that is guided for commercial industrial and zoned for C one general commerce. So that's kind of what that general area is right now, just someone's aware of it. No.
No one.
It's zoned for downtown commercial. You'd have to rezone this and re-guide this to commercial industrial. That's why we're here for the discussion.
I'm looking at this building to see if it's the fire, the old fire station building.
But that's not.
That's not the same use though.
That's not the proposed use. The proposed use is, no, the proposed use is personal storage for vehicles.
If you have storage, it has to be in commercial industrial. These are the storage.
Most people that purchase, like they would actually be an owner, like they would own that. So it's like buying a house. It's like buying a town home because they're all connected. The person would purchase that. I don't, I don't see it, I don't see people buying that. And then next door, it's a retail business. Like then how do you deal with parking?
Well, that's the thing, if you have.
So like I don't.
Bring that up. If you have, um, businesses going in there, now you got to look at what potentially additional parking will need. Um, in Prior Lake, they built a bunch of these. And I know, for instance, um, in one case, they have like a CrossFit training facility there. So there is sometimes just twenty, thirty people there, but they have parking up front, a big long row of parking all the way around the structure. And that, you know, allows for people to park there on site. Um, other people are buying them for whatever, but in that case, it was a business that went in there that used fits in that industrial district, which is what that zone there is.
Right, but we would really struggle.
Yeah, you'd have to determine upfront how much parking there is and then that would limit what type of business could go there.
So if we rezoned it, so how do? So if we rezoned it, so how do we limit that, you know, like, because we could not.
The limit would be based on the parking. If they don't have enough parking, they can't allow that business to go in there. If that's what you could do.
So who ma, who?
Manages that?
Yeah.
City staff. Any proposal would come through city staff.
Of the type of business that was looking at purchasing a unit?
Correct. And if they have a business in there and they don't have the parking, that business would not be allowed, you know, unless they went through like Agave did and got, gets a variance for that. But that was a downtown type of structure. But this is being changed from the downtown district. In the past, the city had looked at downtown areas, um, a little more leaning on the parking side. So.
The main thrust of the question is, do you want this parcel to be a commercial industrial use, or potential future use as well?
I mean, that's a pretty big question. Because we don't know a lot of, you know, we don't know, are there other people interested? This is the first person that's come to us with this much interest on, on this piece of property. You know, I saw it more used as like, I was hoping for some more of like a retail, something that people could come to and not like being purchased as like a condo or more storage. I know that you wouldn't make it look like the boat storage, but we have a lot of storage.
Ryan, are you up in Simpore with your business?
I rent the space.
Yeah. So this is something like you would be interested in for your business. I mean, not saying you'd be interested in move, but it's kind of like the same.
It would be more for what he's talking about. Someone that's
Yeah.
like you, that has cars and stuff like that, wants to, that lives in the cities and that can't, doesn't have a spot to put it. So they come out here and bring their cars.
Yeah. Or if you're, um, like you have carpentry stuff, you have to do some stuff.
And that would be the thing. There'd be small contractors that just need a space to store, store stuff, but you know, you're only going to be able to store stuff in that unit. And then you, we have to make it so that they only can park in front of their door and that's it. They can't park wherever they want and have a trailer and truck and trailer and all this stuff sitting around. Because that's what's the problem with other parts in Simpore there. There's people that park in front of other people's.
Les, you want for this one?
So in, in our documents, our, our documents, our other facilities is just that.
Yeah.
It has to say, this is, this is a, this is a private public storage, sorry, uh, personal storage. Your parking is limited. There's no, there's no overnight parking. There's no outside storage. There's certain things to keep it, like I said, clean, to keep it simple. Um, that way you don't have to, they, leaving my truck and trailer out overnight.
Yeah.
It's just, it just declutters and takes that out of there.
Do you have a HOA because you, you do the plowing and mowing and stuff, that type of thing? Maintenance on the outside of the buildings?
So what we had was the old fire station, which, you familiar with that? This, okay, so, so you know what it is? Um, I think whether it was EDA or whoever decided that it was close to downtown, so that should be a downtown theme. And he's building out two of, two parts in there right now. Um, tenants are, I don't know if he signed anybody up yet. So if, if Les wants to, you know, say that they're not going anywhere or something like that. But that's, that was so, it was such prime for getting our downtown. We have, we need to have more available for downtown.
But that also too, and then the parking issue too, and then the city council, uh, the planning commission, uh, agreed to use the actual city parking area.
Yeah. Well, even without, I have a whole different theory on downtown parking, whether it should have to provide because Minneapolis or St. Paul or whatever, they just need to open up a frontage and you find your own parking. Um, but, you know, here we're supposed to save, that's his, next to his property for agave. I don't believe that's fair.
No, I know, I'm not saying.
No, I'm just saying, we're always looking for, but, but anyways, I think it's, what I'm saying is, if you take even that old fire station and throw it on that plot, I think we'd still rather have that for downtown availability, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm.
For the theming of, we have no place for people to start a business, but, but then we can say we can run to Oconia for ten minutes and not have businesses in there. I mean, that's actually true.
A lot of people say they like going to Oconia, kind of like a little vacation.
No, your wife likes you going to Oconia because it's a little vacation for her.
Because they can get ten more stores, or it still isn't going to compete with Oconia.
No, it's not going to compete.
But anyway.
I mean, that's a theme we have to think about, but.
Yeah. But anyway.
Yes, if that helps at all.
It blending with the other storage buildings, kind of making a, it's a blend, but yet it's not the same in regards to appearance. I like, that's part of it.
So to get back to your question or your comment on the, like I said, the retail, the only downfall is it costs a ton of money for new construction, right? And so that is a tough one, especially when you have a, a building that's there to tear down and plus the water that's there. There's definitely some small challenges if you're going to do a resi, sorry, a small commercial business to get that in there. You just, the cost alone. So to look at, um, even if we looked at it in a different way of something that was more of a, um, main floor business and then upper level residential, unfortunately, nobody's going to pay three thousand dollars for residential rental up top. And the same downstairs for businesses. It's just, it's huge cost for a, too small of a lot for what is there. So, I mean, that is a downfall. Um, but the other part is, right, like you said, people that are coming to town, usually they've got a lot of other garages. Um, they are coming to town and they're, they're using the town, right? They're going to be using the bars and restaurants and they do, um, use some of the services that are around. So we need to bring a little bit of the town back as well.
How, um, are all your units, when you buy them, usually sell out? Or do you still have some empty, like, I don't, what's like your percentage of, like, the demand?
Um, so I don't have any available anymore. Um, and neither are Hutch or the Glencoe facility. Um, I, I build small scale. So I'm only going to build, in this case, one building, but I only build one building at a time. And typically before I have this, the shell up, I have most of it already sold. Um, that's kind of how it's, how it's been. Um, again, can I pursue the future? It, it does well.
Do you have bathrooms in these facilities or not? Yep.
Yep. Well, so each, so what I do is we can sell them on, on different levels. And what I've done in the past is we, we can start with a cold storage garage, if you will. Um, and it does have sewer and water that would be roughed in to the unit. But then from there, I mean, there's curb stops, typically curb stops on everyone. And if they don't turn their water on, we just don't turn on it. Um, all the way up to the guy that has the bathroom, maybe a small kitchenette, we've done mezzanine for storage, um, interior finishes and floor heat. I guess it really depends on what the client's looking for. And from there, we just kind of build a soup.
So you sell and then you could do the in-floor heating?
Yep. Yep.
Not necessarily as a hooked up right away, but if you have the need for it, then you do it.
Right. Yep.
I don't know. That lot is, uh, I remember when that lot was a lot different than it is now. It's been, uh, changed a lot, but I'm not. But it would be nice to get rid of that building for sure. We've been dealing, dinking around with it after about fifteen, twenty years, and nobody could ever come up with a solution for that. Now's the time to do it.
Well, in defense of that, um, the city's never really put pressure on the current property owner until I got here.
It was drawn up many times, but there was never a solution.
I understand, but the city never put pressure on the current property owner since he obtained it to do anything. It's their standard.
They have their option. They did have chances. They actually wondered at what time they were going to do anything.
No, I understand that, but
That's what I'm talking about.
Pressure on a property to do something with a dilapidated property is different than somebody saying, yeah, I'll kind of do something maybe.
It actually looks better now than it did ten years ago, if he, when that guy didn't own it.
Well, I mean.
He had fences.
We were part of the whole history. And, you know, just like you were saying, just the cost of not knowing what it is to demolish the building or get rid of it, that was a big financial burden on the city to.
A bigger one, but I haven't.
Right. But that's one reason why I think that it was given back to the county. But anyway, that's, doesn't, that's not part of this conversation.
So I think to circle back around, anything else you'd like to add before?
Nope. Just whatever comments you guys have or thoughts. Again, trying to keep it as a downtown space or, um, try to figure out maybe a.
That's what I'd like to see, but I'm only one. But I do love car condos. I just think they should, even if they're in an industrial park, industrial parks, um, and I don't know if they're even allowed in the industrial park for what it really is, is we really want business up there. But this would be great for up there, if you ask me.
You have one lot left.
So the question before planning, uh, the planning commission from Preston is, the old creamery lot specific.
Mm-hmm.
Is what he's proposing something you want to rezone to allow? Or do you want to keep it as a C two downtown use?
I personally want to keep it what it's zoned currently.
The way I look at it, it can always be rezoned later if something happens. Just like we're doing now. What if the place burnt down and if, you know, it couldn't be restored or?
At this point, that's irrelevant. We have a proposed.
Last, we had. We're dealing with the same situation.
Sir, don't cut me off.
You're cutting me off.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
We have a proposed use in front of us. We're not talking about what ifs. We have proposed use in front of us for a car garage space. Do, does the planning commission want to recommend up to city council to rezone it so that this may be allowed from its current zoning use? Preston is looking for that answer.
So now we're, we're re-zoning it to say it's a boat shed? Is that what we're doing?
Correct.
No, boat sheds are zoned C one.
They're C one?
Yes. Boat sheds are zoned C one. They're guided for a commercial industrial and the future land use plan. So if we were to go this way, we'd re-guide this commercial industrial and then rezone the commercial industrial, because that's what we, the C one use wanted to allow for the storage. We've had discussions in the past about the boat sheds and rezoning that from C one, C one to commercial industrial to match the use.
My stance would be the same as the fire station, as far as it may take fifty years to a hundred years to get business there, but that's my stance. So whatever, you know, we could have said the fire station could have had storage, but we chose to go downtown. Um, there's a lot of people wanting to buy that for storage too. So I see it as kind of the same thing. So I would have, it's too close in years to change my mind to say, well, that didn't work. We'll do something else over here. But I, I would, I would have the same stance of the fire station. So if you can read my answer on that one. But I'm only one person.
Well, I'm looking at the availability of the land that's on that lot as to what's usable for this prison or any other, whether it be commercial or otherwise. Because of that pond, for instance, kind of messes up that whole lot there. And the only thing that I can see that would fit on there in regards to structural wise would be what you proposed, what you can propose there here. And I, and, and that, of course, doesn't allow much parking. But in the, in the, in the event of being thrown otherwise, like Tom wants it, there wouldn't be availability for parking anyway, because the pond is there. The pond would have to be moved. And, uh, I don't even know why the pond's there really, but you know, something's happened that. So I, I'm for, I'm for it as it is, because it blends in with the storage buildings we got. And, uh, it just kind of breaks it up a little bit for, for entering into the other phase of the zoning of the city. And there's also that, uh, option of getting rid of the old building, that I saw a building, and it's probably very dangerous if some kid would go in there and get hurt, liabilities. So I, I think it's a good deal. But, uh.
As far as the parking.
And I think it would be right to zone it that way.
As far as the parking, I don't see it as much of a problem, even if these were individual businesses. I just don't see it as that much of a problem, whether, like, a dentist or hairdresser or whatever, whether, I mean, what are they, thirty feet?
Thirty, yeah, thirty wide and forty-five.
So that's three cars in front of each one. I don't, I don't see a business that takes three cars. I mean, that's, that may be a little low, maybe a little high, depending on the business, but I don't think parking would be an issue if that kind of strip mall would be, you know, it's not a big football field worth of parking, but it's downtown too. I've got a different theory on parking, I guess, but.
Parking's been an issue in this town since eighteen eighty-six.
So, yeah.
I would lean towards maintaining it as downtown a, as is.
Can't have a perfect parking situation.
I'm sorry.
There's only so much space downtown. So I would maintain keeping it zoned as is. I think it's a, it's a great proposed product that I would love to see in town, but, um, you know, not right in the middle of town.
That's kind of.
Ryan, your thoughts?
Uh, yes, I was looking more for retail with condos above, I guess.
Dan?
I would agree. I was going to ask the question, but I don't, with, with the parking topic as well as the pond, I don't know if the pond is something that could be moved or not, but would there be a possibility of doing retail in the front and doing part of the condos you're proposing in the, in the backs? You still have that hybrid space, but I just don't know that that, it would be the right, like you said, the, the right location for something like this. I think the idea is phenomenal. I could be, see myself being a customer for something like this. I just don't, I don't foresee it like you say. I don't foresee it in that, in that space.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to stay for the next one?
We're going to bring something up.
Yeah, discussion on cannibalism.
Okay.
We're going to bring something up in regards to a business district. When we did our master plan for, uh, the boys down in the cities there, we, we, we're looking at re-establishing our main business district on County Route Thirty. Do you remember anything about that, Mr. Thompson?
What was that?
You, you weren't here when that happened, I don't think. Remember, we were establishing zoning for, uh, having business district on County Route Thirty going.
East. Are you talking about downtown?
Yeah.
Well, I know there was somebody that discussed on the Vincomyer property one time, trying to make a downtown area there, but that never went anywhere. Is that what you're talking about?
That was a possibility, right?
Well, somebody brought it up in just one meeting thing with city staff, that they would look at doing that and it went no further than the first meeting.
Were everything going along pretty or what's that doing then?
Uh, right now, it's not even in the city. So it's not zoned anything right now.
It is for, uh.
It's long-term where the trunk highway twenty-five bypass and thirty cross, there would be potentially some future commercial there, like highway commercial C one. That's potentially the plan. Be that map right behind you there on the wall, that little red spot, and that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So that, that intersection would be looked at as a bigger intersection at some point in time in the future. So that's not look to be a downtown mode district. It's just look to be as like highway commercial, which would be like, you know, maybe a gas station or, you know, little strip mall, some fast food in or something like that.
The property we have for ma, for main, main business district, which is, it's very limited as far as the terrains and all of that. It's two blocks long.
Yeah.
I know there was discussion about doing that, but I want County Route Thirty. At the time when we were getting it, it has been planned for.
Well, it was discussed to be commercial, not necessarily downtown commercial. The guide is for highway commercial, like it is up on seven twenty-five, which would be more like your highway type businesses. So that is in the works. If somebody was ever going to develop that, that could happen. So. There is a lot of overlap between those districts and what uses can go into both districts sometimes.
Tom?
We're moving on.
We're moving on. Is that what the silence was all about?
Yep.
Number seven, discussion on cannabis zoning regulations.
So with the upco, uh, now with the upcoming, uh, regulations.
We're moving on. Is that what the silence was all about?
Yep.
Number seven, discussion on cannabis zoning regulations.
So with the upco- uh, now with the upcoming, uh, regulation and licensing by the Office of Cannabis Management, starting in January of twenty twenty five, one of the items that cities are tackling is cannabis types of business and where they are going to be allowed to be zoned and established within our zoning districts. So the Office of Cannabis Management, one of their tasks that they were, uh, set with is to provide a template ordinance for cities to use that they can then build off of to guide that use. So we've taken that, John and I have been working on it. And the section that we're looking at here is under zoning and land use. It's a couple of pages in on the whole. It's after, it's in section three. Zoning and land use. Um, so we have a handful of businesses and we want to go over this with the planning commission to make sure what we've got it slotted is what, where the planning commission wants to see these types of businesses go. So all of these have been listed as an interim use permit type of use, and the reason that was selected by John and I is an interim use permit runs with the person, not the land. A conditional use permit runs with the land. So if you were to permit this under conditional use permit, it would always be able to be that with an interim. If it ever changes happens, the city gets the opportunity to take a relook at it. As cannabis may become more commonplace as years go on, this could fall to the wayside, but this tends to be where we're going with it, just to make sure you have that level of control moving forward. So the first one we have on up here is cannabis cultivation. This would be planting in fields or an agricultural, uh, like we had talked about with, uh, our cola farm, some sort of hydroponics or indoor type of growing or out in the field type of growing. And for that, uh, John and I initially thought either in the agricultural district or in the commercial industrial district would be the best places for those. Any, uh, any discussion on if there are other types of zoning districts you'd like that to go in? And the only other two really available would be the C one or the C two on this. So, uh, we'll take this right line by line here. Any objections to agricultural and commercial industrial for cannabis cultivation? Seems like the right fit or?
Do we have agricultural?
Yes. Yeah, you do. The only area that's currently agricultural is up in the, um, uh, what do you call it? The township area on the north side of town there. Um, that you have zoning authority over on the east side of twenty five. So that area is zoned agricultural right now.
Is that that white section?
Uh, no, that's the land use map. Is there a zoning map up here? No, there's not. There it is. So that green area on that. So that green area is technically within the township. Uh, but we have zoning authority over that through the annexation agreement with that township. So the city does have the ability to regulate stuff in there. If you remember, there was a shed that went up on this property right here a couple of years ago with that new owner. So he had to go through a process with the city tech, even though he is technically in the township. So this is the egg district right here, all this here.
Someone could come to us and say between Fieldstone and that shed, ask to plant cannabis.
Yes. So where this gets tricky now is the use that they're proposing doesn't meet our land future, our long-term uses for what we're looking at. You know, in some of these areas, we have commercial here, and this is where the land use map behind you comes into play.
I'll get that up. Here we go.
Yeah. So if you look at this, you know, this is kind of where you, these lines and dash lines are future roadways. You know, you got some higher density stuff that could fill in there. Then you got commercial up on the intersection of twenty five and seven. You know, right here is residential. So if somebody wanted to put in a facility right there, it would be an interim use until, you know, potentially we could have a set, a deadline on there that one sewer and water is available, or maybe they need sewer and water to run their facility. Um, and at that case, they'd have to annex into the city. Um, and then we could rezone to what we want. So there's some things that come into play with some of that. Now, if somebody was way up in this far corner and they want to do some sort of business there that was temporary, they could use a septic system or whatever. The city could look at that as an interim use permit that has a sunset clause in there that one sewer and water is available and they're able to annex in the city, that use goes away and has to be moved. So that's why the interim use makes sense, where a conditional use would run with the land and every owner that buys that property. So, so that, that you have some ability to put sunset dates in that interim use for certain circumstances. Now, if it's right along the city border, I'd be very careful about allowing it because those properties are pretty much ready to go from a development standpoint. If somebody wanted to develop them right now, whereas way up here, it might take 20 years to get there.
Isn't, didn't we do, we did this in a workshop where like even if you wanted a retail, there's really not a lot of spots in, in mayor that would meet because you have to be so many feet from like a school, from a playground.
Yep, and that's further down the list here. I'm just taking each one, one by one in the zoning classification to make sure it's aligned with what we want to see going.
So this one, it would be, you'd have to have a permit, it'd have to be approved. And if the permit would go away if that land use was for what we changed or.
Potentially. I mean, it depends what you put in the permit, I guess. I would recommend something be in there that it's a temporary deal until a water sewer development's available that goes away. That's why interim.
Okay. Cause, cause I'm really not interested in having fields of this close to city limits. But you can't limit it, correct? To that level?
You need to regulate it as a city. It's something that's allowed through the state. So you need to.
You just have to regulate it. Okay.
Right. That's where we're, that's the discussion. Where do you want to allow it? Now, the only other area that could come into play long-term from a zoning standpoint is there is some turn, you know, talk, we've had it in the past about creating a straight industrial district, not just commercial industrial, but for only industrial uses. I know the Vinckmeyer property at one time was looked at as that possibility. Maybe you allow it in there if it's some sort of greenhouse facility as well as, you know, but that district doesn't exist today. It may in the future, but as of today, it does not.
Could you, on this vein, if we want to keep it away, could you take, like right now, we've had that entire swath as agricultural. Could we rezone chunks of it that are closer to the ci- city to what their future potential use are? And then as that happens?
We could. The problem that, and the reason why this kind of exists is because those uses are agricultural. And by rezoning it to, you know, residential or high density, now you become kind of a non-conforming situation. And those people, you know, they have the right to annex at any time if they want to sell for development. Until that time happens, I guess, you know, they just stay in the township and pay a different tax rate or whatever it is. So.
They still have to get a permit? Cause like what if the person, the own homeowner that has the shed?
Yeah.
What, did they have any say in that permit or would they?
If they own the shed, they would have a say in it. Is that what you mean?
Well, I'm just saying like the property that butts up to that.
To them?
Yeah.
I mean, they would, if it's a public hearing, let it through an interim use permit, they could come to the hearing.
So that would be a public hearing kind of thing.
Uses are processed the same as a conditional use, which requires a public hearing. So even though they're in a township, we would have to hold a public hearing here at city hall.
Okay.
To the city of mayor. Now, if you remember a while back, there was someone proposing a solar garden on that property. And the city did not have interest in it because it was long-term looked at being residential or development. And they have been, I don't remember how it went down, but they kind of went away after, so didn't meet our long-term land use plan. And we had said, you know, you could put solar garden industrial areas like down the Vinckmeyer and they weren't interested in that at that point. So that, kind of the same thought here.
Okay.
So.
For cannabis cultivation in commercial industrial, what would that look, is that more like a?
Greenhouse type facility. Like you said, the our cola farms had something similar. They were proposing at one time, not for the cannabis.
Not cannabis, but a, a greenhouse. So if they want to do greenhouse and produce cannabis, that's where the commercial industrial will come into play.
Yeah, I think the, limiting it to those two, those two seem reasonable if this is the product we're talking about.
Going fine?
Yeah.
Next on is cannabis manufacturer. So cannabis cultivator would sell this to the manufacturer, would have a facility that processes it, turns it into product, whatever that product may be. Uh, John and I felt probably the only good spot would be commercial industrial for that. Generally wouldn't want it in a C two or a C one or anything like that. All right. Then we have a hemp manufacturer, same classification as cannabis manufacturer, manufacturing and commercial industrial. Sound good on that front?
Yes.
Excellent. Next is wholesaling. So once it's manufactured, it could go to a warehouse or a wholesaler that then just then would distribute it down to the retail size, uh, for a wholesale, having that in the commercial industrial, so in a, on a Shimcore like district. Seem like the best fit for that rather than maybe a C one type of use or anything like that. Sound good? Okay. Then we get to cannabis retail. Uh, and Nikki, this is the one you were talking about. Cannabis retail. We had that in the C one, C two and commercial industrial for allowable uses. Now this gets a little tricky. Because if we go up here, minimum buffer requirements, this comes into play. So buffer distances, uh, for proposed cannabis business to the proposed property line, these come into play on the retail side. Uh, so we could prohibit those within a thousand feet of a school, fifty, five hundred feet of a daycare, five hundred of a residential treatment facility, or five hundred feet of an attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field. I do have a question into O seven, whether a regional trail qualifies. Since miners use that. I haven't heard back from them yet. It's been a couple of weeks. I'm sure they're swamped with questions on a lot of stuff. But I did submit that as well.
Is that similar to alcohol by chance? The setbacks?
No. Nope. Uh, let's see here. Let me get that map up that Nikki was talking about.
It pretty much limits one little section.
So I used our GIS tool to draw circles. So the boundaries actually are, would go from not the center point of the property, but they would extend out from the property lines. Now the GIS tool doesn't do that all that well. So I did basic circles to give an idea of these are the buffer lines from schools, Zion and Mayor Lutheran, from playgrounds to those other features, drawing those footages out. So if we zoom in on here, the entirety of the downtown is blotted out, maybe up in here. And maybe some of these boat sheds, you might get it. But again, this concentric circle of a thousand feet from Mayor Lutheran is right from their dead center. It's not from their property line. So that may shove it out even further to cover those areas. So I would even discount these out. Covers all here. And then we do have Meadow Park on the south side with Shaves Offs. Little bit here, but otherwise Shimcore is left unscathed. So when you talk cannabis retail business down in Shimcore is about the, even though C two is available, and that doesn't mean that sometime down the road, say up here or another spot, as a city grows, more C two becomes available, there might become a spot that becomes open, that isn't covered.
And thi- this area right here is guided for commercial, so that could be a possibility, but there is the discovery park right here that doesn't have the circle. So if you ran a circle around, that would limit some of that as well.
Yep. So you'd have a circle about like that, which would knock out all that land because there's a playground there as well. I joked around, maybe that's a strategy to start throwing park playgrounds up.
There you go.
It's a buffer strategy. I'm, that's a joke. It's a joke. Illegal minds watching.
It just really limits it to a certain area, but.
So even though it's, so when you look at the ordinance and you say, yeah, we're going to allow it in C two, as of today, there's no C two available for it to go in when the buffer kicks it out. But that doesn't mean at some point in the future, there might be a C two spot that's outside as the city grows.
Because of some other reason.
For some other reason, yeah. But this gives everybody an idea of what's getting blotted out by those buffer requirements as we look at what's included and what's not. Yeah, it's fun putting this together and realizing how much just got kicked out.
This is concerned.
Yeah.
Our leaf could sound.
Oh, Ma- Mayor Lutheran and Zion being positioned where they are with their thousand foot circles. That easily wiped out a lot of this. So really it's down here.
I can't go the move anymore.
I even joked, you might even be able to, Mayor Lumber could open up a suite in there and this little side hustle.
That's why you're looking at the Dakota Rail Trail, then that would be bumped out.
Yeah, if Dakota Rail Trail, you'd have five hundred feet in either direction of it and that was wiped out. Um, so that's what we have listed as, as a re- if you look at it as a retail business. I'm sorry, get to the right one. Cannabis retail. It was just generally retail, whether or not you like cannabis or not. We thought it would be acceptable in C one, C two and in commercial industrial type of setting. Any objections to that classification for the retail side of things?
No. No.
Cannabis transportation business. Um, I don't know if we'll ever see one of these, but this is specific trucking for cannabis. Uh, people who transport cannabis on the state level have to have a license for trucking that and transporting it. So if they ever had a cannabis-based transportation business, we felt.
Some of the cars we impounded kind of.
Talking like a warehouse type situation or what?
Um, I like loading bays, loading docks where they would bring the product in from the whole depot type of thing, truck it out, centralized type of stuff would be looking at with this. What's over that, we thought commercial industry would be about the only place that'd be acceptable, wouldn't be a C one or C two type of use. Cannabis delivery on the other hand, so transportation, you think a mass, mass transportation of it for delivery, it would, sometimes there are e-businesses that would contract with a Uber Eats level type of arrangements. And then if you're delivering it, you need to be licensed with the state for that. So if they had that look, um, in the C one, C two or CI commercial district, probably even look at crossing out C two off of that.
Could.
If you wanted to X that out from C two, but the, so they would have delivery vehicles rather than semi trucks on the transportation. Actually talking through it, if you wanted to strike C two, that, that wouldn't necessarily be a C two type of use. So if you wanted to have it C one or commercial industrial.
Yeah.
You could limit to that.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. And that's what I've got for looking at for the zoning classifications. That's the long and short of that. So I'll X out that one, C two for delivery. And I think we're good on all other parts.
Do you want to talk about hours of operation?
Oh, hours of operation. Um, I threw in here just nine AM to nine PM. So under state law, I'll let me get that up. So this is the Office of Cannabis Management guide, but that they put together, once it loads. This is available on the website. So if you want to peruse through it, it's a lovely read. I'll get down right to the meat and potatoes of it. Optional there. Cannabis, there we go. So hours of operation. With state law, it is a, uh, these businesses are, uh, retail is allowed to operate between Monday and Saturday, eight AM to two pay, two PM. And then on Sundays, ten AM to two AM. And this a little bit reflects the liquor laws. However, they allow local jurisdictions to restrict that further on the end. So by default, if you don't regulate, they could be open eight AM to two PM, Monday through Saturday, and then ten AM to two AM on Sunday. The extra language here, a local jurisdiction may adopt an ordinance prohibiting sales for any period between the hours of ten a, or eight AM and ten AM, and then nine PM and two AM. So the way you look at this is they've got the core hours there, but then they're saying local jurisdictions, you can bump up the ends to shorten that up if you want to. So you, we could leave it eight AM or we could make it as early as ten AM. And then on the backside, you could leave it two AM, but you could bump it up, bump it back to nine PM and cut off that extra time on both ends. So I threw in nine to nine, that's a really a placeholder number in there. Um, throwing that out for discussion. What would the planning for retail types of businesses? What kind of timeframe would the planning commission like to see and send up to city council for consideration?
So if a if like they were, okay, so let's just, I know that the, like, let's say the gas station has a liquor store. So could it be a similar like that? Like let's say that liquor store now was a canvass or I know it can't go there because of all the other.
Yeah.
But so they would have to, is it like liquor where you, they, you have to have a separate entrance to the establishment or is that establishment, you know, does that make sense? Like, cause.
Yes, I know what you're getting at. The answer is, I don't know.
I, I'm just curious if they treat it similar to alcohol. So the gas station is open, but that you couldn't purchase the whole time it's open?
Correct.
Is that kind of what you're saying?
If you have a liquor store attached to a gas station, they have to have their own outside entrance.
Correct.
Um, and then that way, if they have different hours, that has to shut down, but you can still go into the gas station.
So they could, so if we, if that was, let's say they decided to have a cannabis store instead of a liquor store, they can't because of whatever. I'm just using it as an example of that I can think about, think it through. They would be only. They would be only able to sell that from nine to nine if that was our hours, not eight AM to two AM or the hours they were open.
Yeah, so let's just say the gas station's twenty four hour. Let's just say for ease. This would limit the sale of those cannabis products between those hours. So even though the gas stations open other times, they can't sell it outside of those hours.
Okay. But you don't.
Basically saying that since the liquor store can only be open from eleven till ten, that's only hours they can sell because they can't have another entrance. If they could have another entrance into their, no?
Nope. So for new builds, so for off sale that we're talking about with liquor, I do know instances where there are existing stores that are old enough where they still have the unified combined entrance, where you walk in and there's liquor here and there's other stuff over here. That's because the building's so old and they've been operating so long that they're grandfathered in in that regard. If you were to build today, you would have to build a separate entrance.
Like Target, when they added alcohol, it's a separate entrance.
Yep.
That's why the gas station had to.
Do the liquor side, but what I'm saying is, so the liquors is open from eleven till nine, whatever it is. That's the only time you can buy cannabis if that's your hours.
Right, so let's say Ryan goes to the gas station store with the cannabis attached. Let's say the hours are nine to nine. You go at ten PM. You say, hey, I want to buy this cannabis product. They're going to tell you no because it's outside the, even though you can grab it and bring it to the register.
Can't.
They should be telling you no because it's outside the hours of operation. And if they sell to you, that's a violation and we can yank their license. It's like tobacco sales too. If they're in violation of the ordinance, we can yank their license on that.
But couldn't you make it so they only sold the cannabis on the liquor side?
I don't know if the state law is that clear.
Just because that way there's no way for you to not sell out of hours.
Cheap.
So require them to put up walls?
Well, require them that they can only sell it on that side of the.
On the liquor side.
On the liquor side.
I was just using that as an example of like, I'm curious, I I don't know if that's the detail where I was just trying to understand the nine to nine that.
I don't know if you can make retroactive throw walls to block it. I I don't know.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, that way you kind of make it so it is restricted for that time period and yeah, pleases itself a little bit. So the, so to be the devil's advocate, the more you restrict this, keeps the day's dealer still in business. So I mean, what what's the purpose of restricting these hours versus anything else that's going to? Just saying, just being a devil's advocate.
What's the, what are the hours for alcohol?
Uh, I believe alcohol is allowed.
Okay, and the start, is it ten AM, eleven AM? What's the?
I think it's eight AM.
Okay.
I think off the top of my head.
Liquor stores are up until one?
Or the bars. The bars are up until one. So but we're also.
I think they changed it. You can be up until two, but the bars can be and you sell, you can sell.
That's the difference between on sale and off.
Early.
Okay.
On sale is on premise, so that's like a bar.
Right.
You buy your drink, you consume it, that's on sale license. Off sale is.
You went in.
I buy a six pack of whatever and I go take it home, can't consume it on site.
And those hours are what you said is, what is it again, eight and ten or eight and eleven for alcohol off?
I'm just trying to understand how, what to relate it to that I currently understand.
Right, I'm just going to look it up.
I just feel like it should just mirror alcohol sales and it's.
Yeah, what? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I just think it it makes sense just to mirror to to off sale alcohol.
I would think so.
You're, it's an intoxicating product, just.
Correct.
Keep it simple.
Another city I work in, Rush City, that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
They're going to mirror their alcohol.
Keep it simple and do the same as whatever the off sale hours are.
If that sounds good, I'll do that research. And if that's the recommendation, mirror the hours for cannabis to that of off sale intoxicating liquor.
Then there's not a, then you're not confused.
Keep it simple.
Yeah. Liquor stores, I know they have a Sunday, they're open Sunday now, and I forget the time. It's like eleven or noon before they can open in the morning or something like that.
Yep. Matching off sale hours sound good?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
With that, smart.
Uh, that's it for cannabis.
Hmm. Next meeting, Tuesday, December third. Everybody fine with that?
I don't know yet, but probably.
Number nine, number nine, Commissioner's report. Anybody got anything on anybody else that? Leslie, Les, would you like to take care of number ten? Come on, you can do it. Let's, new guys, number ten, what do you got?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Give a second?
Second motion, second adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Thanks, guys.